Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, May 23rd, 2022. The time is 5:31 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lichens.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg. We will mark as excused unless there's any objection from council. Councilmember Starset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Six present.
Okay, great. If you would all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skoobachch Band of the P'Alp Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Yes, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I request consent agenda number eight be put into new business, please.
Yes, we will add that to new business. We'll make that new business item two. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Question to approve? I second it.
Okay. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. Okay, so we have a presentation this evening. I'd like to welcome Stephanie Lyle from our Harbor History Museum.
Good evening, everybody.
Oh, hold on one second, Stephanie. I'm so sorry. I skipped over. I skipped over our first presentation. My apologies. Hang in there for five minutes, okay?
No problem at all.
Okay, we have a Public Works Week proclamation. This was a really fun week. We, I went with Shannon Costant- Constanti, Costandie and Diane Bertram to our wastewater treatment plant and our public workshop, and we delivered breakfast to them. And then we had pizza delivered over here for our public works engineers over here at the, or at the Civic Center, and it was just so fun. Diane had bright yellow t-shirts made up for us in public works colors that said, "We love our Gig Harbor Public Works" on the back, and we just really honored and celebrated them this week, along with Police Appreciation Week. And it's just been a wonderful week of celebration of our fantastic employees. But I have a proclamation that I'd like to read this evening for Public Works Week. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Gig Harbor. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Gig Harbor. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals and the engineers, managers, and employees of the city of Gig Harbor, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week. Now therefore, I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the city of Gig Harbor, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2022, as Public Works Week in the city of Gig Harbor, and I encourage all residents to join me in paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 23rd day of May, 2022. And I am actually going to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. He has some words to say as well, and I think maybe even some photos to share with us. So Jeff, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, your proclamation lists the many ways that our Public Works crew here affects the lives of everybody. As you know, it's a lot of work to keep all this infrastructure up and running. We have improvements, we have operations, we have maintenance, we have planning that we do. It takes a full workforce, and there's 50 plus of us here to do that, and always trying to find ways to be efficient and save money. You see that in budget, and if you haven't yet, you'll see that soon. But much of the work that's performed by our crew is performed in the background. We hope that you don't see us. We hope that things will just operate smoothly, and if there is a hiccup, we jump in, do our work, and stay out of the limelight. If you know our Public Works crew very much, you know that most of them want, they just, they just want to be a kind thank you and moving on. They don't want anything else. Jim Stanton, after 31 years, is getting ready to retire. He said, "Do not throw me a party. I will not show up." He says, "I appreciate that," but anyway, there's a lot of people like that here. Just thank you, and we'll move on. I do have just a few pictures I wanted to share real quickly of just some very recent activities, tasks, projects that we've done. Some of them you might have seen already. So I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. Make sure I show the correct one. There it is. Okay, so this is just a, our, this is our pipe camera, our underground pipe camera. Wastewater Crew is using this in this picture. This was earlier this week, today. And so you can see the cameras on wheels, and it has about 300 feet of cord that tethers it to the above ground, so if it gets stuck, you pull it back. But anyway, that, that camera, we used to pay a contractor to come out and use a camera every time we needed to look into pipes. We bought this camera seven, eight years ago, and it's been a lifesaver. It doesn't do everything, but it does a lot. This is Chuck Roy, Senior Operator Treatment Plant, using our sewer line rat system that we put on our website a while ago and had a couple of weekly updates on. It's a pretty simple device, but it's been saving us a lot of time, energy, and effort to find some pipes that are plugged. Lift Station Six project from just the other day, still going, gangbusters, lots of equipment. If you've driven down Ryan Street, there's always equipment sitting there, so making progress. Remember, I couldn't tell who this crew member was. This is at well number eight, the not very well-known well number eight. They have a back behind the Rushmore Development, just south of Holycroft, just cleaning up some access. And I believe this is at Veterans Park, and just crews doing what they do, getting at it, mowing, keeping, keeping up on things, because this is the time of year things grow. And this is famous picture, famous location, Harborview Stinson. This is the halfway through the day of paving on Thursday. This gentleman you see is not a city employee, but he's a materials testing, one of the people that you, or contracts you see all the time is materials testing contracts. And we have public works project. This gentleman here is doing density tests. The rollers have compacted the asphalt, and it needs to be a certain percentage per specification of compacted to maximum density. And that's a nuclear gauge on that, and that's what he's testing, is the nuclear gauge helps to find out what the density of the asphalt is. And then lastly, this is just from last Friday, doing, I think it was last Friday, they were doing some hydrant flushing on Harbor Hill Drive. You see this, this time of year, we get out, we work with wastewater sometimes to help clean their sewer lines, but we also flush our water mains at the same time. This happens because we have a lot of iron and manganese in our system, and some of the larger pipes, the iron and manganese gets settled out or is some, gets some dirty water calls, and we try and get ahead of it by doing this routine flushing. And so you've got two hoses here coming out of both two sides of the fire hydrant. So just a quick snapshot of what we do on a daily basis.
We're so appreciative of you, and you, you and all of our Public Works employees. If we were in council chambers, we would give you a standing ovation, but we'll give you a round of applause, and that's what we can do. And yeah, just thank you so, so much. You guys are, I see you all around town, everywhere, and I try to wave as often as I can and yell nice things out the window, so everybody should do that, too. Only nice things, nice things. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So, so I agree. I try to wave as well, and you know, they may not, our Public Works team may not like to be noticed, but sometimes they are the face of Gig Harbor. And if you ever see them interact with our citizens, which sometimes happens when a citizen walks up to them, if they're on the street, you will see them talk to our citizens with respect and professionalism and friendliness. So that's a great, that's a great team you have in Public Works. All of our employees do the same, and thank you. It starts from the top down, so to the mayor and to Public Works Director Jeff Langham. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Katrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I may be biased, but I think Jeff is the best Public Works Director in all of Washington. Just want to give major kudos to Director Langham for his leadership in Public Works for our city. We're a small city, but we have all of the utilities that Jeff mentioned, and it's a lot to manage. And the fact that the services go off without a hitch as often as they do is a testament to his leadership. So just wanted to shout out Jeff.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Now Stephanie, it's your turn. My apologies from before. So we have a presentation from Stephanie on our Peninsula Cultural Arts District proposal for the Harbor History, and this is our Harbor History Museum Director, Stephanie Lyle. So thank you again for joining us this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to share this proposal. And before I start, I do want to congratulate Jeff and his team. They are amazing. So we're really lucky to have such a great publics work team, and we always love having them down around the museum, and it's always great. So thanks for all your hard work. We, we know it's a lot of juggling, so. And all that hard work on the storm drains, that's, that's never ending, I think. So thank you very much. So I will just give a brief introduction and kind of explain what it says. Some of you have heard me talk about the Peninsula Cultural Arts District and the proposal to form it, which is what we're trying to do with this proposal. So one of the things that we, one of the reasons why I'm presenting to this, this to the city tonight is because we really need the city's approval and support in order to move forward, to approach the county, to put this on the county ballot. So this is a voter-approved initiative, which I'll walk you through here real quick. So I am going to share my screen. So this is just a proposed initiative called the Peninsula Cultural Arts District, but it is based on, on two, two different taxing districts are available in Washington State. So in short, this is based on RCW 6738, which is the formation of a cultural arts stadium and convention district. I will say that there is not one of these in Washington State, predominantly because most communities have tried to use them for the construction of stadiums or convention centers, and there's just not enough resources associated with this particular initiative and the lids that are on it for, for raising that kind of money. But for cultural arts and for our nonprofit organizations that serve cultural tourism, this is a game changer. There are many cities throughout our state that actually have city museums or you know, various commissions that are funded well, but this particular proposal is just 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed property tax. And there's a lot of things that it will do. But just to give you some, some background and then the quick overview, the boundary of this district is, is described by the RCW, and it either has to be a community college district or a school district. We are opting for the school district because our community college district actually includes Tacoma. And Tacoma has already passed something called Tacoma Creates, which is a sales tax-based taxing district, and these taxing districts cannot overlap. So we are opting for the Peninsula School District, which I think is a great fit for this area. The timeline for this is, we are proposing to get it on the February 2023 ballot with funding available in 2025. So it is down the road. We have to be pretty forward-thinking when it comes to this kind of stuff. But I will just really be candid and say that this museum was built with the idea that ultimately a different funding structure would be in place. We rely entirely on donations, grants, gifts, that sort of thing, and there is no reliable funding basis for it or many of our other nonprofits that do cultural tourism and education programming in our area. So that's why it's so important. I mentioned Tacoma Creates. That is another funding model. Olympia just passed a taxing district as well to support their cultural arts. This is different because it is more of like a rural library district as opposed to a municipality or solely in a municipality. So those larger cities are opting for a sales tax-based model. This model is actually a property tax-based model because most of the area is rural, and we only have one incorporated municipality. So that is the boundary of the district. As you know, it's Peninsula School District, which we are very happy and proud to serve and to work with. And so that gives us a pretty good sense of like where this actually would apply. We are in conversations with the Fox Island Historical Society, as well as the Key Peninsula Historical Society, to ensure that they are secured for funding as well in this proposal, as well as quite a few other nonprofits that do this in type of important work. So this is just a cap of the existing legislation. Many states throughout our country have something called a museum district, RCW, or a legislation that allows museum districts to be formed. We do not have that in Washington, so the only avenues we currently have in existing legislation are either the Cultural Access Program or the Cultural Arts Stadium and Convention. And that's RCW 6738. So there is a difference between a taxing district and an overlay district, and I think it's really important to understand that difference. Taxing districts are intended to generate funds for the operation and capital projects of basic community services. They're governed by state laws. Overlay districts are really awesome, but they are not intended to generate income unless there is a special grant program or something. So things like being on the historic register, whether that's a city-state, county, or, or national register, that is a nice designation, but it is not a funding district. Local working waterfront is another one that even the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area, a creative arts district. These are great overlay districts, and they have some great potential for, for helping coordinate activities and focus our, our efforts, but they really are a special designation that have no regulatory function. So when we look at this, we're looking at what the Cultural Arts Stadium Convention District can do, and I will just say Cultural Arts District from here on out, because I think that's the, the realistic approach. Our levy rate is just 10 cents per 1,000, and that is very low in comparison to other levy rates for libraries, parks, or schools. As you know, the probably our newest levy or taxing district, I should say, is the, is the Parks District, and the Library District has been around since 1946. Schools have been around for quite a long time, so you can see that is a very small amount in comparison to some of the other taxing districts that we have out there. This is just a comparison between what Cultural Access, which is sales tax-based, would possibly generate. This is a comparison between a million dollars versus point, a million six. So while no one ever loves to talk about taxes, I do think that it is a very real need in our community if we are going to continue to be able to maintain our community collection, provide cultural tourism services, and a whole wide range of educational programming. This is an interesting part of this particular proposal because the governing board is this, is defined in the RCW, and it does include council members of the cities, city or cities in the district, members of the county legislative authority, the county executive, and, and also members of the community college district. So this is interesting makeup of members, but I can kind of understand why they did it this way. But this has impact for the city because someone from the council, or our wonderful mayor, would need to be on the governing board of this particular district. We talk about who can receive these funds. There are a lot of models throughout the country. One of them is in Denver. There are museum districts throughout various states, almost, I think, at least 16 states in, in the United States have museum districts, for example. But the folks that can actually receive these funds will be museums and historical societies, operators of historical sites, cultural tourism-serving organizations, nonprofits that are running other sites. So this gives you just a sense of who would be eligible to receive these funds. And then these are some of our, our organizations that are right there, and there, there might be more. There might be some that are different. Some may choose to opt in, some may choose to not. But ultimately, everyone stands to gain through this program and effective management of it. So we'll look at tier one support, which are organizations that own and operate cultural tourism facilities and serve the program with regular programming and open hours. Tier two support is a grant pool that various organizations can apply to for basic operating funds or special capital projects. So that is all part of what will get more clearly defined in the comprehensive plan that will be developed with the program. If, if, I should say, when it passes. So there we go. So this is what it takes to pass. It actually is defined also in the RCW, but this is an example from the statistics of the Peninsula School District proper. So we have about 53,000 plus registered voters. We need 40% of the number of people who voted in the last election, and then the number of yes votes has to be three fifths of that 40%. So it's a challenge. It will be a challenge to pass this. I really hope that our community will step up and really support it, because I think this is the way to really take some of the burden off of the city and make a really viable program that can really benefit many, many people, work hand in hand with the city, with the school district, and with the county to provide the best programming we possibly can. So our next steps obviously are city approval. You're my first stop on the whistle-stop tour. And then obviously, we have to get approval for the ballot from the county. This can be done through just basic approval by the county council or through public petition. It has to get put on the ballots and go to public vote in February of 2023. So that's basically the next steps or the process that we need to go through, and we are working really hard to meet all of the deadlines associated with getting things on the ballot with the county. So that's a very short presentation about what this is. I'm happy to take any questions or try to field any questions or concerns that you might have about it.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Stephanie. That was a great presentation. Can you give us an example of cultural tourism? It was mentioned a lot, but I'm trying to figure out who either in our, in this district, probably the Kitsap School District, or Penexa School District, excuse me, who offers that? It seemed to be, it was featured a lot in the presentation. I'm just not aware of it, and that may be because I haven't even thought about it.
Well, it is described specifically in the RCW, but I, I think that when you look at cultural tourism and in the field, honestly, you can look at five different papers and have five different, slightly different definitions. But essentially, the idea is we don't necessarily have like an ancient Greek temple in our city. If we did, it'd be a little weird, but, but, but just as an example of that. So say you have an ancient Greek temple. What you're doing is you're bringing tourists to that site, but you're also raising awareness about the archaeology associated with that, the ancient cultures associated with that. So in contrast, in our city, you know, obviously, the museum is one of those places that looks at what is the culture of our city? What is the heritage that's associated with that? And you can divide it into cultural arts tourism, cultural heritage tourism. So there's a lot of different ways that you can, can take a tact with defining what cultural tourism is. We are actually working hard to build up a little more knowledge about that. And so I think that there's ways that you can look at what is the culture of your city in terms of its history and heritage. You can also look at culture of, of a city in terms of its arts and creativity. So I think it depends on the lens that you want to use. You can also tie these things together. It is another phenomenon that's currently happening, where you tie arts, culture, and history together. And our walking tours are a great example of that, because we're doing the natural history as well as history. So there's a lot of different ways to approach it. That was a long-winded answer without a really, really clear answer.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Wook.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Great presentation, Stephanie. I have two questions. I guess you mentioned that some nonprofit may not want to participate. Why would that be?
I suppose it depends on whether if, you know, for example, if there is a super rigorous and exhaustive grant process that's associated with this, some people may opt out. I mean, I can give you an example. The Heritage Capital Project Fund is an extremely complex and detailed application. A lot of organizations choose not to participate in that because not only are there, is it complicated to apply for, you also have a 13-year obligation after you get the funds. This particular district, we are hoping, would not have that complex a, a process. And so what we really want to do is get operating funds out to organizations that need it.
Great. So, so the 1.6 million that would be gotten every year, that goes, is it all go, does it all go out in grants?
Well, there's, there is a portion of it that is set aside for administration, because you have to have administrative folks to be able to administer those distributions of funds. And so in theory, yes, it should all go out.
For our nonprofits.
Yeah.
That's, that's a wonderful way for these, some of these folks to make money. So my question now, I think, is probably to the mayor, and, and, and that is what does city approval look like?
I'm actually going to turn that over to Daniel Kenny. Thank you, Daniel, for being with us this evening.
Yes, absolutely, Mayor Council. Thanks so much for having me, as always, I guess. What I'd like to do is provide some follow-up information to council. You know, Ms. Lyle has provided a great presentation. Sounds like a wonderful program. I'm not seen in the law a role for the city in this process. There are three ways that it can get created. The county can do it independently to go to a public hearing first, to then go to a vote. Two or more cities can provide a resolution. There are not, I guess it sounds like not two cities in this district, so that avenue isn't open. And then it's by a petition from the public with a certain number of signatures and whatnot. And so I don't see a role for the city council in approving anything or issuing any statement now. And I think that is important, because if it does make it to the ballot, the procedures for a city council to provide comments or to vote to approve, to support something is a prescribed process. And so what you need to do for that is to notice with the proposition number and name an opportunity for that to be put forward, and it would be an equal opportunity for both sides. Can't imagine somebody would be on the other side, but, but both sides would have that opportunity. And then following that opportunity, you can vote to support it as a conceptual support. But there is nothing required as, as I read it, and of course, I haven't been as involved, as Miss Lyle, but to, to move this forward. Council doesn't need to issue a resolution. Doesn't have to vote yes right now to move this forward. There's a prescribed process to do that. And so really, I don't see that there is anything for council to do right now. And in fact, if and when it does make it to the ballot, If and when it does make it to the ballot, we want you to have not done anything so that you can do that process that you would do for any proposition at that time. And again, that's not not taking away from anything from this wonderful presentation. I just want to make sure that the council takes its steps appropriately.
Sure. And is there a timeline for this process?
So I'll defer to Ms. Lyle on that. You know, I I've reviewed the the creation. There there are the three avenues to get there. I did briefly see, I think that there's a time period to get it from the public hearing, which is kind of the next stage to the ballot. That can be a little bit extended. It's certainly longer than what Ms. Lyle had put forward. But I have no idea how how that timeline moves or this this speed. That's real. It's really a county driven thing. And this is all going through the county. And that just happens to to live over right where you all are.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And and I'm not an attorney, obviously, but and so I do. Really appreciate your reading of it, Mr. Kenny. So. One thing I do want to say is that from my reading of the RCW, the city. Has to decide or any municipality has to decide whether they will be all in the district. Or not in the district. And I don't know if that happens later in the process. But my for for I know for our organization and for many other organizations that are based in the city. That would be a big game changer if the city decided not to be part of the district.
And 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 thank you so much for saying that because, yes, there there is an opportunity to pass a resolution to opt out. And so if if the city council was trending that direction. That would be where you would do a resolution to pull yourself out. But assuming that either all of the signatures are are there to get it moving forward in the process or the county independently does it to move it forward. The that is kind of the understanding is that it is moving forward unless the city pulls itself out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any any other questions from council? Okay, well, thank you again, Stephanie, so much for your presentation and for joining us tonight. And we hope you have a really good evening. Thanks again. Okay, so moving on to the mayor's report. So I know it's been announced in our gigabyte and we had a news flash last week. The unfortunate resignation of Linda Kelly last week. And so I are our city administrator. So I have appointed an interim city administrator, Katrina Knudsen, our community development director. And I just want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for stepping up and answering the call during this time. Another unexpected transition period that we find ourselves in, but she is amazing and I have every confidence in her. So I'm just. Really, really pleased that she accepted that. Call to action as well as a few of our other staff, which I will. Maybe leave that to Katrina or another meeting to kind of let council know. Some some other people that have stepped up to be also amazing during this transition time. And so just very appreciative of our entire team here. Just really doing what it takes to get things to just keep things moving, keep things going and. Everyone just does it with such a great attitude and I'm so grateful, just so grateful for our team. So thank you again, Katrina. And then I know everyone is anxiously awaiting a Harborview Stinson update. So I'm turning that over to Jeff to give you all the latest and greatest on the roundabout.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you said, you've noticed that the travel lanes in the roundabout itself have been paved. That was completed on May nineteenth. The last of the concrete in the roadway itself is going to be is scheduled to be placed tomorrow. The weather is looking favorable for that. And then by the end of the day on May twenty fifth, that Wednesday. The contractor should be able to complete, weather permitting. Raising all of the underground utilities up to the final grade of asphalt. When they paved, they put all the underground utilities. They let those stay under the asphalt and they have to raise them now to degrade to get them. Provide access again to the underground utilities. They're also going to be installing street signs. In the right of way and the poles for the rapid rectangular flashing beacons. Last thing they have to do before they can. Remove the detour and open the roundabout is they're going to install streetlights. And some of you might ask, wow, how could you get streetlights for Harborview Stinson because you still don't have them for Rosedale Stinson? And that has to do with the fact that Rosedale Stinson is a federal contract that has a bio America clause. Our standard streetlights are made in Canada. So we can't get those from Canada. So. Just a little hiccup on there, but we expect that. The roundabout will be open to two way traffic be honored before May twenty six. So that's Thursday. Weather is looking favorable for that. I think the rain is coming in on Thursday. So there is a lot more to do. Yeah, that's going to be exciting. In June, the contractors will be busy finishing a few things. First of all, end boat site, the park site itself still has a lot of work to do. Roadway, the surfacing of the driveway, some walls, a lot of concrete work and landscaping. They're gonna also have to wait until mid to late June to install the striping in the right of way. That has to do with cure times for asphalt. And we still are anticipating the final completion of this project. In mid July, so just after the Fourth of July. Of course, all these days are weather dependent, but for the milestones, but we are looking good.
So exciting. And if you happen to see any of us dancing down there, just don't worry, we're all just really happy that it's gonna be. Completed enough to remove the detour. So. Thank you so much, Jeff, and to all of our team that's working so hard and our contractor has been just fabulous and getting this. Done ahead of schedule, so. Lots of gratitude. Councilmember Storset.
Wrong button. I just wanted to say thanks. I know it's it seems like it's been a very long project, of course, when it's happening itself, but. As we get close to the end, you know, and anticipating it, it's very exciting and it seemed, hate to say this, but seems like it flew by. It's probably not the case for everybody and, you know, it's it's definitely impacted me as well, you know, living in the area, but. I think it's going to be great just in time for the maritime parade as well. So. That's very exciting to be able to, you know, go through there and and have that. So thanks again for your work and and taking all the. All the criticism and everything that goes along with it. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Storset. All right, our city administrator report this morning or this morning, this evening comes from our interim city administrator. Katrina Knudsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we sent an email out, but to reiterate and let the public know. I've appointed Shannon Costanty. As our interim HR director, we hired her semi recently as HR analyst and she has a breadth of experience in an HR director role for the. YMCA's of Puget Sound and she's. Really stepping up to the call to get a lot of jobs posted, get people hired, get a lot of HR. Stuff moving through our system. So much appreciation to Shannon. And if you haven't met her yet. You have a really great thing waiting for you. She's a wonderful person and you will have a good time getting to know her. Also wanted to give kudos to Principal Planner Carl Decimus and Building Official Fire Marshal Paul Rice for stepping up. Out of class during my period as interim city administrator. They will be picking up some of my community development director roles in this interim period and. Just wanted to shout them out and really appreciate them for stepping up. To assist us in this period of transition. And the last item for my report is that we will be bringing a resolution to council at the next council meeting. In an attempt to make Juneteenth an official city holiday. Juneteenth is now a federal holiday in the United States. And if you don't know, it commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans. This was made an official federal holiday. Last year, Washington State Governor Jay Inslee last year indicated that Juneteenth, the nineteenth of June would be a Washington State holiday this year. Many other Washington Puget Sound cities have already made this a holiday. So we are a little. Late, but due to transition in HR and city administration, want to make sure that we get that done in order to celebrate this holiday. For our community as well as our city employees. So we will be have have a resolution in front of council at the next meeting. And thank you, Josh Stecker, for stepping up to draft that as well as drafting proposed MOUs with both of our. The supervisory and employee unions. And I've heard from both of them and they are appreciative and those have been signed. So. If all goes well and the resolution passes at your first June meeting. Then Juneteenth will be a formal city holiday on the nineteenth and will be observed on June twentieth. Which would mean the city hall would be closed that day. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Denson.
I just want to say, I think that's fantastic. Thank you so much, Director Knudsen and City Clerk Stecker and Mayor Merkley. I'm just thrilled. This is really going to be meaningful to the community and staff. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to public comment on non agenda items. And City Clerk Stecker, I understand that there are a few that were written comments that were submitted.
Yes, we do have several written comments that came in. Written comments are all posted with the online packet so they can be viewed on the city's website with the rest of the pack materials. I have five that were submitted that were asked to be read aloud at the meeting, so I'm going to read those now. So if you're on our Zoom call at home, it will be a few minutes before we get to your comments. First one I have is from Amy French, forty nine twenty one Cedarwood Lane Northwest. She writes, I am writing you today in support of a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. The Fourth of July and earlier times was called the Glorious Fourth, but since the holidays inception, people have been injured. Animals have been terrified and houses have been burnt to the ground as a result of poor decisions in the name of celebration. I come from the Midwest and there were many ways to see fireworks in a public setting and it was generally a one day occurrence. Today, the celebration seems out of control with so many now using fireworks on their own. Unqualified to use explosives and many making poor decisions for days, even weeks before the actual holiday. Why? It's ridiculous. I've had the pleasure of spending twelve summers here in Gig Harbor and live just outside city limits. Now, as the holiday approaches, our household is planning to leave town for Leavenworth where fireworks are banned. Just to avoid the noise and effects that fireworks leave behind. Our first summer here was damp and dreary, but I distinctly recall being outdoors several evenings prior to and for a few weeks after the Fourth. When loud concussive noises of explosions would shake the house, it reverberated. The next year was no different, but this time my wife just returned from a deployment in Afghanistan and was so jumpy. And upset by the constant random sounds of explosives, it was difficult to watch. I felt helpless because I couldn't make the explosion stop, but I think. I think that was the year a local woman's house burnt to the ground. By twenty fifteen, we would try to get out of town just to avoid the noise, but often it wasn't possible. I just cannot understand why such loud disturbing noise and potentially fire starting behavior is allowed. Lori was deployed a total of three times. Each time back, each time back, the PTSD around the fourth was has been worse. I know there have been, I know there have to be so many others for which these bombs are traumatizing. Traumatizing annual occurrence, all in the name of celebrating the very freedom for which the soldiers and support staff are said to be protecting. Yet the soldiers themselves are not being protected by the self issues of fireworks. Can we please come together and realize that fire danger alone is enough to say ban the fireworks? Additional damage to health and welfare of people and animals should be the icing on the cake. Please, I ask that the city council take the necessary steps to ban fireworks. Thank you. Next one is from Lori Cleveland at forty nine twenty one Cedarwood Lane Northwest. I'm writing you today in support of a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. In the US military, there is a certain mantra. Namely, leave no person behind on the battlefield. This ethos is even embedded in the soldier's creed. But sometimes the battlefield follows soldiers home in the form of PTSD. Intense disturbing thoughts and feelings related to experience that last long after the traumatic events have ended. Dramatic events that can easily be can easily be triggered by the sound of fireworks. If you don't live with PTSD, it is very difficult to explain the feelings of fear, anger, detachment, stress and anxiety that come over you when these events are triggered. While fireworks may be entertaining for some or just nuisance for others, for those living with PTSD, the evening spectacles. Could trigger serious mental health consequences and PTSD is not limited to the military. Some people who survive car accidents, childhood abuse and domestic violence, to name a few, can also suffer as well. I'm one of those living with anxiety and anger trigger each year around the Fourth of July. I am not a soldier. I served in the National Guard for ten years. I then served as a civil servant for thirty two years, wearing a military uniform under civilian command and had several deployments to Afghanistan and Iraq. Since then, Fourth of July celebrations have been extremely anxiety ridden for me. The constant random barrage of explosions from those setting off fireworks seems endless. And over the years, they just seem to have gotten worse. While limiting the use of fireworks to just one day this year will help shorten my anxiety, it will not end it for me, nor for the hundreds, maybe thousands of others in the area. Some say that shooting off fireworks shows your patriotism, a love for their country. Is it? How can putting the country that you love under a threat of wildfires be patriotic? How does putting your fellow to citizen in harm's way make you a patriot? It doesn't. It's easy to say that it's my personal right when you disregard the rights of others. PTSD is an invisible disorder which can be overlooked when critical decisions are being considered for those who may not be aware of the impact. The city leaders, you have the power to ban fireworks in the city. When you deliberate your next steps, I ask you, please, don't leave me and others like me behind. Thank you, Lori. Next letter is from Marilyn Wickers at forty two twenty two Thirty Fifth Avenue, Gig Harbor. I'm writing you today to show my support for a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. My family appreciates the opportunity to live in a forested neighborhood and see the teeming wildlife right outside our window. Several times a week, we are treated to deer, raccoons, eagles, owls, and the occasional bear or coyote. Who have visited our community in green belts. I want to focus on the aspect of enforcement. Some might argue that a ban on fireworks can't be enforced. Therefore, why even have a ban? Let's assume that the American, the majority of Americans don't want to inflict harm on others. Also, we know that laws are not one hundred percent enforced. Laws are used mainly to establish a common understanding or framework of behavior that is illegal. An example might be speed limit laws. Speed limit laws don't prevent anyone from speeding. They are designed to increase safety and reduce possible possibility of collision from vehicles traveling at excessive speeds. Relevant to the topic of fireworks laws are designed to keep people from harming one another. Moreover, speeders are discouraged through ticketing. Those who use fireworks can subsequently be discouraged from establishing a ban. Why do folks want to apply the same enforcement argument to banning fireworks? It makes no sense to more than seventy percent of homeowners in our Heronwood HOA. I encourage the council to join the growing number of communities seeking to protect the lives and property. Without laws or in this case, a ban ordinance, there can be no consequences. A ban ordinance will have the following benefits. One, it's a first step in preventing manmade wildfires and is the right thing to do. Two, it will prevent the sale of fireworks in Gig Harbor, making them more difficult to purchase, which in turn will help discourage their use. That alone could cut down on their use in the city. Three, it sends a message to the community that the city is trying to protect its citizens and property. Four, it sends a message to the county and the state that we need to be more proactive in preventing wildfires by focusing on the source of the fire. Five, it's an opportunity to educate people on the hazards. Of using fireworks. Communications tool to remind people that they cannot be used within the city. One errant spark can create a conflagration that will be difficult for any local fire services to contain. These explosives will chase our cherished wildlife from homes or habitats. Doing nothing else does nothing to protect us. It's simply. It's simply no longer an option, especially in today's ever changing climate. Thank you. Next comment is from J. Mel Maeve at twenty eight fourteen Kelsey Lane. Hello, my name is J. Mel Maeve. I'm a middle aged woman living in Gig Harbor. I love the Fourth of July, but I don't like all of the public fireworks celebrations. For years, these celebrations have gone on for days before and after the holiday. I understand that should change this year with the new ordinance limiting their use to just one day. We shall see. Also, as a homeowner, I'm nervous about fireworks landing on the roof and causing a fire. Therefore, I strongly request that fireworks banned in Gig Harbor. Thank you. And I have one more to read. This is from Nancy Travis at forty six nineteen thirty fourth Avenue Court. Hello, everyone. My name is Nancy Travis and I live at forty six nineteen thirty fourth Avenue Court in Gig Harbor. I wanted to put my support for a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. I do not want to have fireworks being set off by people that really don't consider the impact that fireworks can have in our neighborhoods. If just one person sets off fireworks in their yard, that can impact so many others. If just one person sets off fireworks in their yard, that can impact so many others. An adverse impact caused by a few under the guise of personal freedoms or liberties impact us all. My house backs up to a very dense group of trees. As the weather starts getting warmer, I worry about what would happen to my home as well as the neighborhood if a fire started. Who would be responsible for the cleanup? What would happen to our taxes and our property values? Most homeowner insurance companies do not cover if it is determined that illegal fireworks caused the fire. I do not want the equity I have built in my home to go up in flames because of a very preventable situation. There are so many other ways to celebrate the Fourth of July to show your patriotism. Attend a professionally run city or military display, attend or throw a parade or picnic. Before I moved to Gig Harbor, that is what my neighborhood did. We would have a parade and then picnic and then a picnic to meet each other and left the professionals to the actual fireworks display. When the dry conditions we had last year and the dry weather we will have this summer too. Please do not gamble with our community. It is not worth it when there are many other ways to enjoy this holiday. Thank you for your time and consideration. That is all the written comments we have to read aloud and I see we have some commenters and our Zoom panelists. I'm going to give comment permission to our caller ending in 874.
Good evening, Mayor Markley. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Thomas Wick over here on Hunt Street in Gig Harbor. Thank you for allowing me to provide some brief comment this evening. Couple things. I wanted to ask if maybe you, Mayor Markley, I think you personally can maybe answer a question. I know you don't do Q and A here, but my question is about the Pierce County Regional Council. I just recently learned that Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor, I believe back as far as 1998, have been meeting regularly to address issues between the city of Gig Harbor and Pierce County. Actually, I guess there's 23 different cities that Pierce County meets with. And it's to ensure, I'm reading it directly off of Pierce County's site, is to ensure planning between Pierce County and its cities and towns was accomplished in a coordinated, consistent manner. And it also talks about the countywide coordination is accomplished through the implementation of the Pierce County-wide planning policy. And it says, the document includes policy statements on, and I'm rolling down through this. It talks about different things. And I'm getting down to open space and protection of environmentally sensitive lands is one of the issues. And also urban growth areas is on this list. The question I have for you, and I, I'm not, I'm pretty sure that Councilman Wook is also on this council. But when I went in and looked at some of the old archives, the minutes, and I see that the Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor have not been meeting, or at least they're not showing up on the list that I'm looking at. So my question and concern is, I'm beating on Pierce County's door saying, hey, guys, Gig Harbor doesn't have a drainage to support their build-out. And then I'm beating on Gig Harbor's door really hard, saying, hey, your build-out, you don't have a drainage for it. So I'm just asking the council, you, and if it's Ms. Wook, I'm not sure who it is. I believe it is based on the documents I've reviewed. So what message does that send to a citizen who's sitting here watching this unfold? And there's no drainage to support the build-out and build-out continues absent a drainage. But I was hoping you might be kind enough to just touch on that a little bit before you adjourn this evening. I'd appreciate it. I believe my time is up. Is that correct?
You have about 40 seconds remaining.
A bell rang. I assume that was the
Although, a one-minute warning bell. I think we're all getting used to that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I thought it was the time up, so I was just trying to be respectful. The other issue is now that Katrina Knutson is the new city administrator, I would ask that she provide, complete the press for public records that I submitted to the city on September 25th, 2020. Mr. Piaszeki sent me, I sent him a check for $300 and he returned it and said, if you don't cash it, we're going to send it to the state, I believe. So the city has $300. I'm not going to cash the check. I would ask that Ms. Knutson please complete that request for public records at her earliest convenience. Thank you, Mayor Markley, for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Yes, I see. Mary Kuzluski, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor Markley. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Mary Kuzluski at 4340 Borgan Boulevard, Gig Harbor. On behalf of the Sports Complex Impact Steering Committee, Thursday.
I'm sorry, Mary, we may have lost you. Are you still with us?
I'm sorry.
You're just breaking up. We can't hardly hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, can I have a restart of the clock?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thursday will be a very important day for the future of Gig Harbor Hill and the surrounding area. At the study session of the Gig Harbor City Council, you will hear the background of the sports complex master plan, how it all started, how it's progressed over a period of 11 years. Our view and our concerns differ from what's been stated by the city. We are concerned that in 2011, when the city acquired seven acres of Harbor Hill Park, the city determined that it would be a multi-use sports park. We do not dislike or disagree with its design, but we're concerned that there was no one living in Harbor Hill on the use and design of that property. Then came a change from the Harbor Hill Park Master Plan to a visioning of future uses and the purchase of Gig Harbor Little League Fields and the Harbor Hill LLC property, property south of Costco. On March 6, 2018, the master plan was initiated and fast-tracked. The amount of time it took to conclude that the plan should be considered for adoption was 26. During those 26 days, there were two public hearings, which very few Harbor Hill residents attended as they were still focused on the chore of moving into their new homes. This, there was one more public meeting on June 11th. Final adoption was on July 23rd. Strangely, there is no master plan that can be distributed to public on request. We are also very concerned about the impacts of this project. Now that the people of Harbor
There's one minute left.
Pardon me?
Oh, that, that was just the one-minute warning bell.
Okay, the impacts for Phase 1B have a total commitment in the BCRA contract of $25. How can you do a responsible traffic impact analysis and noise and lighting and stormwater runoff impact studies in a period of 24 hours? Why will there be no wildlife habitat impact study? We know that wildlife habitat protection is not codified, but it is treated very seriously in the comprehensive plan. Since when is clear-cutting not upsetting to a community that values open space? We believe it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe our next comment comes from Howard Kushner. And you can press star six to unmute yourself if you're on your phone.
Does that work? Can you hear me now?
Yes, can hear you now.
Thank you. So my name's Howard Kushner. I'm at 4426 34th Avenue Court. I'm here today to advocate for ban on the public sale of fireworks. There was a local newspaper headline that a Burian woman lost her home and husband to a house fire caused by fireworks. So reading that, most people would never imagine it would happen to them. But last July 4th, that possibility became very clear as my neighbors and I witnessed another neighbor setting off fireworks at his home on Jason Street. I feel certain that those were fireworks that were legal to use in this state. Our community is heavily wooded. We have many tall pines, pine trees. And I can't describe the horror we felt watching burning materials being shot off inside an area surrounded by tall pines and barely clearing the treetops at a time of record-breaking temperatures and dry conditions. Some argue that setting off fireworks is their patriotic right. I'm a retired Army officer. I took an oath to serve and protect our nations and the freedoms we enjoy. I know something about patriotism and there's nothing patriotic about endangering the life and property of your family, friends, and neighbors. Supporting your country as a patriot sometimes includes setting aside your self-interest in order to ensure the safety of your family, friends, neighbors, and community. Wouldn't a true patriot want to protect our country and citizens, even if it means protecting them from wildfires? We spoke with the Fire Marshal on 16 May and he informed us that 20, in 2021, as you debated limiting the time fireworks could be used in Gig Harbor, a veterans organization urged you to do so for the safety of veterans with PTSD. As some people have discussed earlier in earlier comments, you followed their advice and this year we have a more limited time that fireworks can be used. If you ask the Burian woman who lost her home and husband to fireworks, if the use of those fireworks was patriotic, I think you know how she would respond. Thank you for, very much for allowing me to speak today.
Our next commenter is Gee Hatcher. I hope I'm saying your name correctly. Or Sarah, which one is, which one is first, Josh?
It unmuted me and I'm Sarah Stewart.
Okay, we'll have Sarah Stewart go first, followed by Gee Hatcher.
Hello, this is actually the first city council meeting I've ever attended, so I feel a little bit like fish out of water, but this was really fun for me. I'm Sarah Stewart. I'm at 3715 17th Avenue, Port Northwest. And I'm really glad that Jeff was on the call too, because the reason I decided to join this call was I was hoping to propose a sidewalk in a bike lane by the south entrance of the Cushman Trail. I live very close to the entrance of the trail and there's currently no sidewalks on 14th Avenue Northwest. So it's not uncommon for me to turn out of my neighborhood and for there to be about 20 people on their bikes or just walking on the busy road. And so I think it's very dangerous. Obviously, for accessibility reasons, it really deters people who might be wheelchair-bound or have other physical limitations from being able to access the Cushman Trail without assistance. And so I think with such a beautiful trail that I love to use, even when I ride my bike on that road, I'm scared a car is going to hit me. So I think it would be really great if we could add some sidewalks there for people to be outside and for people to be more likely to bike and walk around. So I'll keep it short and sweet, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Okay, next commenter, Gee Hatcher. And please let me know if I am saying your name incorrectly. I'd like to get it right.
You have it exactly right.
Oh, perfect.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Gee Hatcher from 4340 Borgan Boulevard, Gig Harbor. I noticed that on the agenda for the city council's study session on Thursday, that there's a reference to the city's obligations for the sports complex. I assume that the obligations refer to the grant monies, the YMCA lease, and the $600,000 contract with BCRA. I have to expect that these obligations will be discussed in the context of the resulting impacts that the Harbor Hill neighborhood will have to deal with. These obligations were made in advance of knowing and understanding the potentially serious impact, which is a little like putting the cart before the proverbial horse. Please consider the impacts of these obligations as Harbor Hill wants to remain a livable neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next comment is Wes Friedman or Dave Arterburn.
I'll leave it. I'd like to make a comment and Dave can follow me. My name is Wes Friedman. I'm at 4425 34th Avenue Court. I'm here today to support a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. So what are the basis of our liberties and how do we contemplate the demands that liberties make on us? That is mainly important with regards to public safety. Yes, we have an obligation to protect liberty, but we must also acknowledge its limitations. To a degree, we all relinquish some autonomy by living in an organized society. Of course, liberties are not unlimited. For instance, we are not allowed to harm another by our actions. Even in the absence of actual harm, we could curtail the behavioral, behavior of fellow citizens in many ways. For example, I cannot drive 90 miles per hour down a residential street, even if I don't harm anyone. The risk is too great. We are all better off in society which laws protect us, not only from harm, but from considerable risk of harm. There are behaviors that are so harmful or so potentially harmful that allowing them would diminish our collective well-being. If you argue for the right to behave however you like in the name of personal freedom, you are arguing that your rights are more important than others. You might prefer that your rights be given precedence over other people's rights, but as a general principle of governing, governing policies, that's obviously impossible to defend. A government's role is to maintain social order, provide public services, and provide security and protections, also known as public safety. Banning the sale and use of fireworks is a public safety issue. Period. Full stop. Public safety does not infringe upon our personal rights. Yes, I have the right to use my own fireworks, just like I have the right to speed on a residential neighborhood. Yes, my shooting of fireworks may not cause a wildfire or harm anyone, but the risk of using fireworks, just like speeding, are simply too great. Fireworks are simply hazardous materials and without a ban, you are allowing public access to them. Simply put, they are potentially harmful. They continuing to allow their, their, their use diminishes our total collective well-being. With all the risks and hazards associated with public fireworks, I ask the city council just one question. What one logical reason is there to allow public fireworks? The point is this, there is no rational argument that can be made that supports the public use of hazardous explosive materials sold under the name of fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dave Arterburn. I'm at 4425 34th Avenue Court. I'm here today to advocate a ban on fireworks in Gig Harbor. I've lived in Gig Harbor for almost 10 years now and every Fourth of July, I watch in horror how the public is allowed to recklessly discharge their own personal fireworks in our neighborhood and throughout the city. The discharges often don't clear the trees that line our community. We're lucky to have escaped a devastating fire up to this point. Without a ban on fireworks, we are literally playing with fire. At the last city council meeting, you were presented information on how to adapt a comprehensive climate resilience plan. While that is a great start, especially in the wake of efforts we are seeing due to climate change, the effort will be fruitless unless the plan also includes the way to prevent the start of a wildfire, not just a way of containing or protecting property from the spread of fires. Banning the public sale and use of fireworks literally is a way to prevent the start of the fire. Clearly, you're not going to be able to prevent all human-caused fires, such as one started by a discarded cigarette. But one fire source that you can prevent is wildfires caused by fireworks. It's ironic that on one hand, there are efforts underway for a plan to protect for a plan to protect the community from wildfires through measures such as debris clearing, using building materials that are far more fire-resistant, or creating buffer zones. Yet, on the other hand, there's always been a reluctance in the past to take any steps to remove the actual fire source from the hands of the public. Fireworks have and can start fires. Now is the time to take away the fireworks. That is one simple step that will take away one fire source. You have the power to prevent wildfires and their destructive forces. Allowing the public sale and use of fireworks is literally playing with matches. A truly comprehensive climate resilience plan must include preventing fires as its primary focus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay, I see Randolph Wickers. And if you're on your phone, you can press star six.
I'm, I'm ready.
Oh, hello.
Thank you. I'm, hello, I'm Randolph Wickers. I live at forty-two twenty-two Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Gig Harbor. I'm here today to voice my support for a ban of fireworks in Gig Harbor. I live in Heronwood Estates, moderately forested community of fifty-six homes. When we moved here, our first July fourth, and I'm sorry to say that my teleprompter just died, so I have to refer to my written notes. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine, we spent our first Fourth of July in nineteen ninety enjoying the Tacoma fireworks display along Rustin Way. The next morning, I was utterly amazed when I discovered a spent bottle rocket hanging in a tree limb on my property. Luckily, it didn't start a fire, but it could have. Afterwards, I talked with my neighbor, and she became more thoughtful in the years that followed. Nevertheless, I've witnessed legal borders elsewhere in my community as they fly to a height of about fifty to sixty feet or to the tops of our trees before releasing their payloads. In twenty nineteen, two King County houses were destroyed by fire from fireworks. This was a catalyst to motivate their county council to ban fireworks in twenty twenty-two. Sadly, however, the ban extends only to unincorporated areas. In twenty twenty-one, Pierce County narrowly failed to ban fireworks by a vote of four in favor and three opposed. Unfortunately, it too would apply only to unincorporated areas. During our residence here, our neighborhood was annexed by the city, so we turned to you for help. A nationwide study by the National Fire Protection Association estimated that during twenty eighteen, nineteen thousand five hundred fires started by fireworks were reported by local fire departments. These fires caused civilian, five civilian deaths, forty-six civilian injuries, and a hundred five million indirect property damages. In fact, a Gig Harbor resident was critically injured by a mortar in twenty eighteen. The study also noted that brush, grass, or forest fires accounted for three out of every five reported fires started by fireworks in this timeframe. More than one quarter of the fires started by fireworks were reported on the Fourth of July. Looking at just the Fourth of July, half of the fires that day were started by fireworks. My family and a majority of our Heronwood homeowners need your help to extinguish fireworks in our urban forests. Fireworks have become less of a patriotic salute as they are a threat of disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, with that, I will close public comment. Thank you to everyone who submitted comments and provided comments live this evening. And we will move on to new business item one, which is Resolution twelve forty-six, declaring the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Gig Harbor. Suggested motion is to move to approve Resolution twelve forty-six, and the report will be City Clerk Josh Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. This is Resolution twelve forty-six, declaring the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Gig Harbor. This resolution was prepared at the request of Councilmember Lycans. The language in the resolution was edited with the assistance of Councilmember Lycans and Councilmember Barber, so it's been developed by those two council members. It is on the agenda for approval of council so desires. I'm going to turn it over at this point to Councilmember Lycans, so that she can give you her thoughts on the reason why we're bringing this before you.
Yes, thank you. I have been really thankful for the thoughtful consideration and supportive feedback that I've gotten from council members, residents, and business following our discussion about a pride resolution at the last council meeting. As a city, we have committed to making Gig Harbor inclusive, welcoming, safe, and livable for all. And I'm proud to put forward this resolution to declare the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Gig Harbor. And I want to invite all residents, if this should pass, to celebrate, welcome, and promote a culture of acceptance to our LGBTQ plus friends, family, and neighbors. How wonderful it could be that no matter how you identify or who you love, you are welcome in Gig Harbor. So, I'm very proud and very just heartfelt thanks to those that have reached out and support, and I appreciate everyone's consideration, and I look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lycans. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment. Josh, were there any written comments received?
There are no written comments for this item.
Okay, any members of the public attending this evening that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not, oh, I see one, Sarah Stewart. Go ahead.
I will say something again. I think this is awesome. I am actually a member of this community, and this being my first meeting that I get to see, I'm really happy to see this on the vote on the ballot, whatever the term is. So, thank you guys for bringing it up. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment, and I will open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Denson.
Well, just real quickly, thank you, Councilmember Lycans, for bringing this up. This is long overdue, and I'm really proud of our city taking this step. We do want to make sure that we are conveying to everyone that we are welcoming and inclusive, and yeah, I just think this is wonderful, so I'm very, very excited to celebrate Pride Month.
Okay, any other council deliberation? Councilmembers, Dorset?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again, Brenda, as well, and we chatted with this couple of weeks ago, and, you know, just thinking about proclamations, you know, in general, which we've had, you know, some other ones tonight, and and I love it. I love the recognition involved. And it got me thinking about, you know, all the other things. You know, so I started looking up what other cities do, and so I think it's great, and I would love to see, you know, more things brought in front of the city as far as proclamations. I'd include that in, you know, maybe it's a part of a, maybe it's a study session, identifying what are the things that we could bring up, creating a calendar for it, you know, throughout the year, because there is a long list of great causes, whether it's local or national. So, thanks for spearheading, Brenda. Councilmember Lycans, okay, thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Dorset. Councilmember Wood?
Yes, Councilmember Lycans, thank you so much. This is a wonderful way to put our words into action. And thank you for writing this. Thank you for, Councilmember Barber, for also helping to write this and and put this together, so I look forward to supporting this with my vote when it comes up.
Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Councilmember Lycans?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution twelve forty-six.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you, council. And we'll move on to new business item two, which is our consent agenda item eight that we moved down to new business two. And this is our professional services contract with Three J Consulting Incorporated for on-call private development review assistance. And this report will be our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As noted in the council bill, this proposed contract for professional services would provide support for public works engineering to perform private development review tasks. These tasks are required by law to meet certain timeframes, and due to the recent resignation of the city engineer and the continued vacancy of an associate engineer position, we think that this additional support in development review engineering is necessary. This contract for you tonight is very similar to a contract that was approved by council in twenty twenty-one with Three J Consulting, if you remember. For those of you who had been here for a while, the primary reviewer of Three J Consulting is Josh Gilcrest. He used to work for the city and is very familiar with our processes, and he's very efficient with those. The contract that you have, though, is, we feel is going to be successful with Three J Consulting, and due to the critical nature of the work, we do feel that this contract is justified. There will likely be no impact to the city's budget because of the salary savings from the vacancies of the associate engineer and the city engineer for a short, hopefully, short time. So, no net loss. I'd happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Public Works Director Langham. Just a real quick question. I'm assuming that Three J would let us know if there's any conflict of interest, say they're doing work for another company that's also proposing some project within the city limits that they would be reviewing?
Yes, they would definitely have to recuse themselves and let us know.
Oh, sorry, were you? Are you sure? You can continue? Okay, Councilmember Wood?
So, thank you, and Director Lamham, I'm in favor of this. I just wanted to bring this forward because because it was voted on in twenty twenty-one, a similar thing by a former council. And this council, I don't think, has had much information. We haven't had a study session or presentation in council before. But our city has a two-year strategic plan, and one of those goals in the strategic plan is to, that we think of more efficient and effective municipal services as a goal. This certainly hits at that goal completely. Another goal is better communications with our Gig Harbor citizens. So, while this project was not included in our twenty twenty-two budget, it will be partly reimbursed on a cost review basis through development fees and plan review, and the cost will be for time and materials only. And we know that a similar thing that was done previously with the consulting firm did not use all the money that was allocated to it, so hallelujah for this good firm and with Josh working on it. And Director Lamham, thank you so much for bringing this forward. So, I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract with Three J Consulting Incorporated for on-call private development review assistance to support Public Works Engineering Division private development review processes in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
I will now open up the public, public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and open it up to any further questions or council deliberation. Okay, seeing, Councilmember Henderson?
No, I'm just, I wanted to thank Director Langham on this. The city's taken a fairly big hit recently on labor, and I think this makes a pretty darn big step to get stuff done, and hopefully, we'll be able to get our own folks on board soon, but in the meantime, this is the best solution. So, very well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Wood. We have a second by Councilmember Lycans. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Those abstain? Okay, motion passes six zero. Thank you so much, council. And we will move on to council reports and comments. Oh, let's see. Okay, who's going first? Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. I just have a continuation to Councilmember Lycans and my Pride Month resolution. To kick off Pride Month, we are going to be putting flags in the planter boxes downtown at Pioneer and Harborview. We've been talking to the wonderful people who are members of the Horsehead Bay Garden Club who manage those boxes, and they have approved us doing this, and they're really excited to be there and help us put the flags in. So, if you would like to join us on June first at ten o'clock, please feel free to meet us kind of outside of the Windermere office on Harborview right there. So, we have a hundred flags that Councilmember Lycans and I will be assembling on Wednesday before we put them in, and join us. I think it'll be a really colorful display, so that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
That's a great idea. I, on May the nineteenth, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting. And again, the discussion is on growth target numbers and the fact that Pierce County is actually contesting their growth target numbers. They want to have more growth than what is allocated to them. There are also some core cities that do not want to accept their growth target numbers. So, and these are big cities, and that is their job, of course, to accept growth target numbers. And when the larger cities don't accept those numbers, then builders look out to smaller cities like Gig Harbor, and that is inconsistent with our growth management target numbers. And it also facilitates sprawl, which is not supposed to happen. So, there is another conversation going on these next three weeks with Pierce County and with the core cities on trying to get them to somehow even up with their growth target numbers that they're supposed to be accepting. So, any of that was interesting. It'll be, then the vote will happen at the next meeting in June, so that'll be very interesting. Another thank you to Director Langham and everybody who's worked on the roundabout downtown. It will be a glorious day, and everyone will be jumping for joy when that is open to the public. So, thanks for all the hard work on everybody who's worked on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lycans?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a very quick report that Councilmember Dorset and I met with the Peninsula School Superintendent Kristen Bar, Creston Bar in an initial exploratory meeting to discuss our ideas for developing a Gig Harbor Youth Council. We've got our work cut out for us, and we're going to be taking some of the ideas that we discussed, hopefully, moving forward this summer to begin to develop plans for youth council here in Gig Harbor, and we'll keep you posted regarding the progress. Just wanted to let everybody know.
Great, thank you. Any other council comments or? Any other council comments or reports? Okay, seeing none. Announcement of upcoming meetings attached to the agenda, you'll find our agenda planning schedule. And as always now, we are including a copy of the city of Gig Harbor two-year strategic plan for twenty-two and twenty-three. So unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening and this beautiful sunny night.